June 28, 2023 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman Curtis, thought about the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Please pray with me. Lord, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for our city of Tyler. We're grateful for the opportunity and the privilege to serve our fellow citizens as council members, and we pray for wisdom and integrity in conducting our meeting this morning. Lord, we pray for health and safety for our first responders and all of our city staff, and we especially pray for those individuals that are serving their community, working outside today. We ask that you, that they stay hydrated and as cool as possible and are able to return home safely to their families at the end of the day. We ask all these names, all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the minutes from May the 24th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to come down there, uh, breadfruit for one award. I have my microphone, so I'm going to talk loud, so if you can be, take that. All right, we have one award for Kenneth Woodson, commercial, $15,000 operator, 25 years.
Thank you. I appreciate the questions. Let's take a minute to do three seconds.
So, go. Ready? Just a little bit to the center. There we go. There we go. One, two, three. All right, thank you.
I was telling Kenneth before we started, when I'm right here talking, this is a guy that has a mischievous smile. It's also this kind of smile that most people want to work around him, so it's contagious. So, keep it up. We appreciate your service. You're a good thing. Thank you. All right, Kyle. Z1. Morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning. This, uh, first item is a request for a special use permit. So, that's 2301 South Broadway. Uh, this is for a, uh, a distance variance or, uh, in order to be able to hold the, to serve alcohol on the property. The, uh, property, like I mentioned, is located on South Broadway. Uh, there is a restaurant on the property, Lot 11 of Corona, and the, uh, the location of the restaurant is within 300 feet of a, of a church, which is also on the property. It's, uh, roughly 178 feet, uh, from door to door, so that requires, uh, the ordinance requires that there's at least 300 feet between, uh, places serving alcohol or selling alcohol companies, a, a church. The, uh, the ordinance allows the, uh, City Council to grant a variance or waiver to that requirement, uh, and in this particular case, the, uh, the protected use of the church is also on the property as, and the safe property as the, the alcohol serving business. We did receive a letter from the church stating that they were not opposed to the, the request to, to sell alcohol at the, uh, the restaurant, and so that's one indication that the protected use is not opposed to the, uh, to the activity. The, uh, the plan and zoning commission by a six-year vote recommended approval of this, uh, special use.
Any questions for Kyle?
Kyle, hadn't a restaurant at this location prior had alcohol sales?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not aware. I'm not sure.
Several restaurants there.
They may have had it, and then, well, they may not have been there at that time.
There's been several restaurants at that location through the years, and I've thought that they had alcohol sales there once before. Just curious.
Kind of the last one, I came before us, there was a school, uh, near, is there any school near this one?
Uh, no, not with it, during the meeting. Not sure of the, uh, location, but not, not a lot.
You know, we, I probably just, I probably shouldn't say a word, but I'm going to. Last time I spoke up, the, the item was denied, but, so maybe I was being quiet, but I'll say, we've done this a number of times throughout the community. This isn't the first time. We're not setting a precedent. It's been done, and that's all I'll say. Any other comments?
Well, the reason I brought up the schools, I know there's not a school there, but I wanted to make a distinction between the last one and this one, um, and what the difference is, I moved to approve this one.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Haney, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This next request is a zone change from R22 family residential district to R1A single-family residential. Uh, this is on, uh, Turner Avenue. Uh, this is in Tyler's North End planning area. The applicant intends to rezone this property and over to subdivide it, uh, to build two single-family homes on the property. Uh, it's kind of, it's surrounded by, uh, R2 zoning, but generally, the properties inside are developed are single-family detached homes. Uh, this is consistent with the future land use guide and the planning commission by a six-year vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z3.
This is a zone change from C1 Life Commercial District to R1A Single Family Attached and Detached District on North Palace Avenue. This is also in the North End. Uh, the applicant plans to rezone the commercial property to, uh, to residential property in order to build a single-family home. Uh, generally, the, the properties along North Palace are still zoned, C1 Life Commercial, but are, uh, if, uh, if they're developed, they're generally developed with single-family homes. Uh, then to the east is R22 Family, which, uh, I believe is developed, again, single-family. Uh, this is, this is the future land use guide. You can see the existing homes in the area. The planning commission by a six-year vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z3.
This is a zone change from C1 Life Commercial District to R1A Single Family Attached and Detached District on North Palace Avenue. This is also in the North End. Uh, the applicant plans to rezone the commercial property to, uh, to residential property in order to build a single-family home. Uh, generally, the, the properties along North Palace are still zoned, C1 Life Commercial, but are, uh, if, uh, if they're developed, they're generally developed with single-family homes. Uh, then to the east is R22 Family, which, uh, I believe is developed, again, single-family. Uh, this is, this is the future land use guide. You can see the existing homes in the area. The planning commission by a six-year vote recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Kyle?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Z3.
Who is the second? Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z4.
This next request is a zone change from R1A Single Family Residential to PUR Planned Parenthood Residential on East Earl Street, uh, also, also the North End. The, uh, the applicant is proposing to develop townhomes on this property. Uh, currently, as you can see there, uh, generally surrounded by R22 family. Uh, many of those properties are zoned or are developed with single-family homes. Uh, to the south, uh, there are single-family homes as well as, uh, a medical office that, that actually fronts on the front street there. The, uh, the future land use guide would be amended to, to be, uh, townhouse garden apartments, because these are townhomes on the property. Uh, they are proposing to develop the property with, uh, eight units, uh, eight single-family townhomes essentially there. You can see there, uh, four-unit townhomes. The, uh, the surrender setbacks are generally consistent with the, the area for, you know, family townhome development. Uh, we, at the, uh, planning commission meeting, the, the applicant was not present. Uh, I believe they are here, present today, and there was a, uh, a neighbor that was opposed to the, opposed to the request. My understanding is that they may, they may no longer be opposed to it after talking to the, the applicant. Uh, at the planning commission, the, the commission denied the request by a six-year vote. Uh, the applicant is appealing that denial, uh, but they are here today to, to speak for their, their application.
All right. Uh, any questions for Kyle before we call Mr. Leandro up?
Kyle, what was P and Z's opposition for?
Uh, I, my understanding is that the, there was concern from the, from at least one of the neighbors, uh, they were across the street though. We did not receive anything, uh, in writing opposed to that, uh, and so at the meeting, there was some opposition, but the applicant was not present to be able to speak to that, so, uh, they, they decided to, to deny the request.
Any other questions? Uh, Louis Leandro, come on up. Go up to the podium if you would. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Louis Leandro, and I live in 2267 Old New Day Road. Okay, mainly, the last meeting, uh, planning was only, it was rejected because nobody of us been able to, uh, and explain the, the law. After that, I went myself to the neighbors, most of the neighbors, and I spoke to them and explained it, and even when that, with the lady that came to the meeting, and I didn't have anybody opposing to this story, even the lady after listening how this story is being whispered. We are doing the most we can to avoid the traffic. We are putting a, a driveway inside the traffic and all the partners, but inside the traffic to reduce the, the traffic.
Was that, was that the neighbor's complaint or concern, Mr. Traffic?
Yeah, the lady about four minutes, she's okay now.
So, is everybody pretty much okay now?
I spoke with, with the, most of the neighbors, and nobody's, is, is opposed to this.
Well, as we all know, it's very important to communicate with the neighbors and try to get everybody on board before you go to P and Z, so I'm at least glad you did it before you came to council. So, any other questions for Mr. Leandro?
Kyle, can you pull back up the zoning map? Uh, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the zone change.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Leandro, good luck with your project. Kyle? C5.
This is a request for a voluntary annexation, or annexation, uh, by petition of the property owner. Uh, the applicant intends to develop this property with, uh, residential multifamily and commercial uses. The, uh, the developer will be responsible to make any, uh, all the infrastructure requirements needed to this property. Uh, this is on the southwest, uh, limits of the city along Old New Day Road, uh, then just south of West Grande. The, uh, this would extend the City Council District Number Two, as, as well as establish the original zoning, and as, uh, R1A, uh, C1 and multifamily. Uh, this, uh, go back to, here, here's the, the layout of the, the zoned districts. Uh, it kind of blocked, blocked out the, the Grande area, because it's kind of confusing to have the whole area there, but the, generally, uh, what you see is, uh, commercial and multifamily along Old New Day, which will need to be approved by the, the developer. Uh, if they have a street there, which I anticipate they would, that would have to, uh, align with, uh, Upton Trail on the east side, and that would create an intersection there, a four-way intersection that, um, make, will put the traffic control device or maybe signalized intersection there. If the, uh, the developer would also, also have, uh, access to, uh, West Grande, this is part of a larger, larger development, and so, uh, adjacent to the, uh, to the existing single-family homes are located outside the city limits to the south. Uh, those properties would be zoned for a single-family residential. Uh, to go north, that's where there's more multifamily and commercial zoning. Uh, here's the, the aerial photo of the, the area, so generally, there, there is a single-family to the south and then, uh, more commercial to the north and the east. Uh, that is an encore, uh, electric stop station on the northeast side there. The, uh, we did receive letters from, or opposition notices from, uh, from some, from eight, eight neighbors outside the city limits, uh, that we do provide notice to, uh, of a zone change or essentially, this is with the south zoning, so it could be considered a, a zoning request as well. And so, we extend that to property owners within 200 feet, even if they're outside the city limits, courtesy, but that doesn't convey any standing to, uh, to oppose the request, and so that's why the list is in yellow there. We did receive some feedback, but, uh, generally, the concern was, uh, how it would impact Old New Day Road, which we discussed at the meeting, the planning commission meeting, uh, but also, the, at the meeting, there's probably some more information provided on what the zoning would be adjacent to that neighborhood, so I'm not sure if there's still opposition to that. I'm not sure if there's anybody here to, to speak to that, uh, but the planning commission by a four to two vote did recommend approval of this annexation.
Any questions for Kyle before I ask Brian Capps if he wants to come up?
Is this the same Moore company that has the housing downtown?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
No? Okay.
So, Kyle, uh, you spoke of improvements on Old New Day Road with the frontage of that property.
Right.
So, then, they will take their section, curb and gutter, work with the city, whatever forward plan we have on improvements on Old New Day, and they will, they're responsible for doing that?
Yes, along, along their frontage, you, you see some of that now, uh, on the east side of Old New Day?
Uh huh.
Especially near the intersection with, with Grande, but, uh, they'd have to do something similar to that at, at the minimum. Uh, development of this, this slide is likely more a traffic impact analysis, uh, and therefore, there may be some additional improvements needed based off that study.
Because the distance between Upton Trail and Old New Day is not far, I mean, we're putting in another intersection, we're putting in a light finding at Old New Day and Grande.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kyle? Uh, anyone have any questions for Brian Capps? He's here for questions if we have one.
I don't.
Uh, and because there was opposition, opposition in planning and zoning, and I don't see any other cars, but I am going to ask, is there anybody here that did not sign up to speak, that was opposed to it, that wishes to speak at this point? Okay, I don't show that anybody's here to oppose it, so, uh, what's the will of the council?
Moving to approve. Z5.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Haney. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z6.
This is a, a zone change from C1 to C2, the multifamily, car mess, multifamily, C1. This is north of that, this property, as far as the same development, as you can see here on that, this is on West Grande. Uh, the C1 portion would be rezoned to multifamily, and then that C2, the, the rented marker area would be, uh, downzoned to, to multi-commercial from that, that general commercial. So, essentially, both of the, this request is a downzoning for the entire property, uh, from that, the head of commercial. The, uh, again, this would be part of the, the development to the south, and would match up with some, you know, the similar, uh, zoning classifications that were just considered. Um, again, this would be part of that, that development, and also subject to the TIA, and whatever improvements are needed, uh, along Grande, you know, and, and the other public improvements needed to, to accommodate the, uh, the impact of the, the development. Uh, staff did not receive any letters in opposition or in favor of this request. The planning commission by a six-year vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? Uh, Brian Capps is here to answer questions on this item, if anybody has any questions. I moved up to.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z7.
This is a request for a zone change from R1A Single Family Residential to PUR Planned Parenthood Residential District. This is on Ultimare Drive and Medina Drive. The, uh, the applicant's requesting the zone change to develop, uh, single-family homes, uh, 16 single-family homes on these lots. Uh, they're currently planted lots, uh, in the area, they are, currently, they're, they're vacant as of now, um, as of recently, they, they become vacant lots. The, uh, the, all the adjacent properties are single-family residential, R1A. The, uh, this request is consistent with the future land use guide identifying the single-family median low density. Uh, these lots range, uh, along the, the R1A, uh, some are larger than six-five square feet, but generally are consistent with, uh, single-family zoning. The, uh, the applicant plans, again, to develop the area with 16 detached homes. Uh, proposed setbacks are generally 25 feet, uh, front yard, 15, or 15 feet rear yard, uh, six feet, six feet on the sides, and then 12 feet on the corner lots. Uh, this, this layout here is turned, so north is on the left side of the ice cream there. Uh, the property at, uh, Mimosa Drive and Medina Drive, uh, which is on the, essentially the southwest lot, that, that's, that lot is set up to be, to front, uh, Medina Drive, uh, generally, if, if there wasn't a, a change here, the setbacks were required to, required to orient the house to, uh, to Mimosa Drive, so that's, that's one change here. The, uh, the maximum height is 42 feet, which is consistent with, uh, the surrounding, uh, R1A properties, and eight-foot wooden privacy fence will be added along the entire west, west side of the development, which is on the, the bottom side there, adjacent, adjacent to those single-family homes. The, uh, let me go back to the, as you can see here, these lots are now currently undeveloped, as are the properties to the east. Uh, all those, all these properties were, were, were owned or are owned by the, uh, what was the ornery estate there. Uh, they, they did have a plan, and they still, I'm not sure, to do a, some sort of an event center, that was approved a few years ago, and so, I think, uh, generally, they, they did purchase the properties, and, uh, they're looking for, for that, for that venture, but the, uh, these properties here are, are being developed for, for homes, what, uh, once again. Uh, the site plan, the applicant did request a, uh, a waiver from this, called a sidewalk. Uh, the planning commission did feel that since the entire property was, or the entire block is being developed, that, uh, it's, it's appropriate to, to have sidewalk for, for this development. The, uh, of the notices that we sent out, is there anyone in favor or opposition to this request? And the planning commission by a three to two vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? The one thing I'll, I'll make a comment about is, is the sidewalks, and I know that, that all the developments require sidewalks, correct?
Right.
And, and I keep thinking about over on Hambusie, where we ended up putting a, a spot, a stop sign at Chilton, Hambusie, and the main reason was because people were having to walk around cars and walk out into the street because there's no sidewalks.
Right.
And it was a safety issue. So, when you don't have sidewalks, it forces people to walk in the street, and if you're walking on the street with your family, your kids, or your dog, or whatever, you're walking where there's traffic. And I think that if, if it's a requirement to have sidewalks, it's a requirement to have sidewalks. It's more for safety to me than anything else. So, any other comments, uh, or questions for Kyle? And we do have the applicant here, if y'all want to ask him any questions. Any questions for Mr. Reed?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, we, we do have a representative, sorry, I'm going to talk at a turn. No. Mr. Reese?
Yeah, come on up.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't say your name on here. Just, uh, what's your name and address?
I said it, so, very well.
Name and address for the record.
We just need, is this for the council or what? It is, yes, sir. Uh, I'm Adam Reese. He needs a card. Representative for Cybertowners. That's just, that's something to give, that's what's presented to the neighbors, um, as the development moved forward, so I just wanted to provide y'all a copy as well to look at, primarily let you know that, uh, representatives have reached out to everybody, uh, no opposition, I don't know for, against, but we've done some due diligence to try and make sure everyone, uh, is aware and has enough to, to meet with our side and have questions. Um, I'll give a little history of, of the basis of this request, as Kyle, you can jump to, you know, there's 16 lots that we need to do. We wouldn't come in with a straight zoning, we're obviously in front of the PUR based on, uh, three items that he, he mentioned, so I'll give a, a very brief history and then go into those, uh, advanced questions at the end of the presentation, if you have any. Cybertowners currently owns and is developing Royal Hills Village, which is affected, is just off the page to Royal, the page to the west in this area, about 100, 100 to 100 feet providing maximum. It's 52 lot subdivision, homes built and being sold as of the speak. Uh, through the course of that development procedure, the full stone deck group reached out to Cybertowners, saw what they were doing, saw the positive improvements that were being made, asked if they were interested in purchasing some of this property, then that they no longer do, for their facility. So, that started with the Medina 13 lots, uh, after some discussions, it included the extra three lots on the far, uh, page, right, of what you see here. Uh, so again, the, the PUR specific is, is three items, Kyle mentioned. First is the Lot 13, that in the middle of that intersection, off of here, is, uh, the intent is, we would rather just have a driveway in the front of that home, sit onto Medina, so that looks like a very consistent neighborhood there, there's not one random house that's just oriented different from the others. Very, very common sense request, I think, what we need there. Uh, the, the second item is the front setback from 25 to 20 foot for one single lot, Lot 14, which is the top rightmost or eastern, southeasternmost lot. Um, it is a reduction of five feet, uh, you can see there's the dash line at Ultimare, but that pavement actually starts pulling away from the front of the lots and subsequently into building setback lines. So, from a, from a general, from a general distance, all these houses will be about 33 feet, give or take, from back at curbs where the pad would start. The pinch point of that lot is going to be at a 30 to 4 foot distance to begin with that reduction. As you continue going pitch up or east, that, that curve actually pulls further and further away, so you're, you're closer to 40 feet separation. So, even with the reduction we're asking for, that home is physically going to sit further back from the road than any one of those other houses that are, that are being built. The, what that allows us to do is just build the normal standard product that Cybertowners has, and push most likely for a long story building, as opposed to a, a more condensed path that could somebody wants to work, it might be a, a, just an alternative layout that they typically have, possibly two square, that's not what they want to do. The third request is the removal of the sidewalks. The, the simple part of that request is that if you were to look on a map of this area, if you were to drive around this area, there are no other sidewalks in the entire quadrant of the session. You have to go several hundred thousand feet, thousands of feet to get to a location where there is another sidewalk, and this is pretty much the center of, of this portion of town. So, anyone that's, that's walking to or from through this area is going to be on the roadway from any other sidewalk they will get to for a very long period of time until they got to this don't pull, if you will, cemetery that has 1,000 feet of frontage of sidewalk, and then they will be, they'll be back onto the roadway to begin with. So, we feel it's a little out of character for, for the region as a whole, but Royal Hills Development, that is offsite, that is brand new, well, which is effectively, will be patterned very much after, if you drive out there today, that's going to be pretty much what you'll see for the homes in, in this, uh, here. That does not have a requirement of having sidewalks ever, so this really will be the only location that has sidewalks. Going back to the, the breakup of the track, the first 13 lots, I think that's the, the main intention. main intention of the, the block section where the requirement would be for the sidewalks. The, I would say afterthought, I think the second state that he will, this, of the three lots on the right, it'll be built in one phase, but it's the second portion that is brought in. Just those three lots, so it'll be effectively L-shaped around that corner, but both of those inlines will get dead end at some side yard and not have any continuation from that point on. There are, if we're looking at that individually, while, depending on most, or I'm not sure if this should be brought up as a block issue or not to begin with, there are two locations that I've found in this city general area the past ten years that have been homes demolished or just vacant lots that have now had brand new houses. The most recent two, if you look in the, on the bottom of our development in the center, you see two houses that are more up and down, painted versus living, right? Those were reconstructed twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, um, old houses demolished, brand new houses out there. Those do not have sidewalks on their frontage. There's another location where there's two homes east of this, northeast, similar condition, two houses brand new, no sidewalks. So certainly for that section, I would say it's very standard of what has occurred in that area. My guess is those are just when they brought in, what determines they're, they're kind of wrong, or if they're not required ones, or wasn't a necessity or need. But what, what I would say that it points to is outside of the full sun event center, which for the most part is the, the last large lot of land in this area, I don't believe in opportunity for mass increase of sidewalks. It's going to materially change this area from an activity standpoint, were it not for a C C I P project led by, y'all led by staff, city monies taking care of that improvement. As a side note, the road is obviously existing, all subdivision is existing. That street is a third, three foot wide back to back roadway. And a normal new subdivision with sidewalks will be very common and, and should not be requested removed most likely. Those roads are twenty-nine feet. So there is an additional four footer road, road width that folks would have to, excuse me, steer away from the center of that street. The, the last comment that I'll make, uh, is the, the vote P N Z three to two, right? I wouldn't typically bring them to sending votes on a case like this. It would be typical. Sending votes that were not on the development as a whole or written that we represented, it was against the, the motion that the sidewalks be required. So there, there is some backup, some support from commissions that, that they feel the sidewalks are out of place in this location and don't fit what else is in the neighborhood in the area as well. With that, I, I haven't answered any questions that jumped ahead on this side, uh, although as I've perspective, requested a motion for approval with the sidewalk being removed requirement.
So, was that, that was just an appeal for us to allow no sidewalks? Everything you just said? So you?
The general appeal for the entire property is just the explanation of history that the P U R versus the, um...
So, what I'm hearing is it would be a change of the character of the neighborhood if we put in sidewalks? Because the characteristics of the neighborhoods are...
What I'm saying, I don't think it would change the neighborhood, but I think it would provide a central location of sidewalks that immediately dispersed in every direction, north, south, east and west, where there are longer sidewalks and, and everyone is immediately back onto a roadway.
Well, I would maintain that, first of all, we've heard the mayor's opinion, our opinion on sidewalks, but it's also a change of the character of the neighborhood to take the eight existing lots and put in higher density to thirteen lots, which is our change request. So, I'm seeing the approval of the thirteen as a benefit to the developer in that the sidewalks wouldn't even be a, a question for y'all that you'd want to put it in because you got five extra lots, not eight. The Royal Hills subdivision you're speaking of, fifty-two lots, did you say there's no sidewalks in there?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's a new development with no sidewalks?
Yes.
And then Royal Hills fixing to develop section three, which is right next to this property?
Yes, sir.
And it hadn't been developed yet?
It's undeveloped now.
I mean, no, no ground's been broken?
I think it has been ready on...
As of last week, no grounds have been broken. It's been, been set. Are there plans for sidewalks in that development?
No, there's not a plan.
So, we're going to approve sidewalks here. That's what our wishes are. But right around the corner, we're going to have no sidewalks again. But we still have an opportunity to add sidewalks to that new development, correct?
I don't believe so, because I believe that in those cases, that's going to be one of their final lighting and setting standards that better allow to developer, not developers face off those.
But if the developer heard the wishes of the city and are wanting the city to be more walkable, more pedestrian friendly, he'd probably want to go with the wishes of the city and add sidewalks to that next development on Royal Hills.
I guess it would depend on the city. I, from, from P N Z, I know that it's forty percent of the city from that body doesn't want those sidewalks. So I would, I would venture, I guess, that there might be one person on this city body that doesn't want them, but that remains to be seen.
Well, I think the forty percent of that commission that doesn't want them was just voting in favor of because it wasn't even brought up. If it wasn't brought up, we'd expect sidewalks, because we expect sidewalks as all new development in the city.
In the apartment, yes, sir.
Sure. So we really, really want sidewalks here. And we'd love to have them at Royal Hills three, and we'd love for the developer to reconsider that new development he's fixing to do that he has not moved dirt on yet, with the exception of the retaining wall he's put up, to add sidewalks to that also. And that's my wishes. Well, I, I could just go back to the safety issue. And, and I think that, Lloyd, if you lived down here on the lot on the very far left, and I live on the lot in the middle, and my kids want to come play with your kids, guess because that, my kids are forty, so I'm not... My grandkids. But if my grandkids are want to come down in there and play with your kids, I want them to be able to walk down a sidewalk and not walk down the street. And there's, there's a purpose for sidewalks, and it's called safety.
And I think the, part of the argument saying the seat, the street itself is four foot wider than average, gives people room to walk, is just something that doesn't go over well either.
Any other comments or questions before we vote on this?
I'll just add one comment. When I see wider roads, I see faster traffic.
There you go.
Yeah, exactly.
Kind of like Golden Road where the Royal Hills Development is, where we didn't put sidewalks in, in the neighborhood, all on Golden Road, where it's suggested to.
All right, Mr. Whitlock, council.
Can we, is it possible for us to approve it with the sidewalk and telling me it has to have sidewalks?
Yes.
That's what I, that's what I would say to suggest.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Because I like a project. I mean, I, I love the project. It's a beautiful area. And I would love to see it there, but we, we, I know the properties don't have sidewalks, but you could start the trend. And maybe you, you know, let's...
I'm looking at numbers. Obviously, we're in perspective of the council.
Okay.
Because you know, I'm on city desires, something was any case according to the...
So, did you make a motion to?
Well, I was going to let Lawrence say, I'll make a...
I'll make a motion.
Okay, what's your?
That we, we passed this, making sure we got sidewalks with it. So we passed the zoning request.
I'll, I'll second.
All right, got a, a motion by Nichols, a second by McGee. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Z eight.
This next request is also a specialty permit for, for the ability to, uh, begin a P A B C law department to sell alcohol at this location, uh, to that two forty-three West Irwin Street, uh, we want to hear the, the applicant plans to, uh, open up a wine bar at this location. Uh, it is located, uh, again, in the downtown area on the left of the street. This is across from Marvin Methodist Church, uh, roughly a hundred and thirty-six feet from the, uh, the door of the location to, to Marvin, and then about two hundred and fifty-six feet to the, to the door to the church on the south side. Uh, that, those are both within three hundred feet of the, uh, pardon, they both do not comply with the three hundred feet requirement, uh, established by, by under the ordinance and by state law. As, so looking at the other request earlier this morning, uh, the, uh, the code allows the city council to make an exception, uh, if, if that distance is not necessary, uh, or whatever considerations that the, the council feels, uh, appropriate. The, uh, looking at this location, the, it, it is located in the downtown area. Uh, there, there is another similar request or situation south of here for, uh, for E T X that was approved, uh, a few years ago. Taking into consideration that your downtown core is essentially, you know, it makes you certain, you'd expect to have this kind of activity, restaurants and things like that, as well as, uh, local churches, uh, within that area. So, um, and looking at the other situat, or other requests that we've had in the past, uh, generally, the council has approved, uh, this is various similar restaurants, uh, that you don't know, that, that's the intent of the use that they've approved those, uh, those, uh, requests. Typically, it's the, uh, kind of retail, the off-price, uh, sales that have not been approved. So, uh, with that in mind, the planning commission did recommend approval of this, uh, request, uh, by six year vote, but did recommend that the approval be limited to, uh, to one year, uh, to allow the, uh, to better understand the, the impact, uh, from, you know, on the protected leases, if there is any, that we evaluate it within a year. And so, uh, that's what the planning commission recommended.
We do have a card, uh, from the applicant. Any questions for Kyle before we call him up?
Kyle, the applicant did reach out to all the, to Marvin and Christ Episcopal Church.
I, I believe they, they did. Uh, we did have a, an email with the application to the, to the church. I'm not sure, uh, if we received anything back, or if they received anything back. We did not receive any, uh, letters of opposition or, or favors, or, you know, like we did on the last one. But we didn't receive any of the opposition from the, from Marvin or the, the church that is located to the south.
Okay, I do have a card here from Robert Matina Birch. Y'all both come up? One come up? How are you? Can you just state your name and address for the record?
Tina Birch, four twenty-second Street, Chandler.
Robert Birch, same address.
That's good.
We're here just, um, to tell you how excited we are to open a wine bar. We started this with a nutrition bar in the same location, um, did not make. But after several people came in and said, this we make it great here on wine location, because it's just a beautiful building that the bossos have re, reconstructed in. Um, we've always wanted to be downtown, and knowing that downtown was going to get even better. We're so excited for this. Um, the reason why we're here is to see if you will please approve the special permit longer than a year. We plan on making this, um, our, kind of like our home away from home. We are excited about this business. We have gotten a lot of people very excited about having just a wine bar. We are not going to have, we're, um, going to have charcuterie, and we're going to have our schnede, and we're going to have it in a very nice place for somebody to come in after work and relax. And if they want to stop there before they go to dinner, um, we're just really excited. But we are asking that you approve it for maybe a three year, um, instead of a, a one year. Um, we are going to be in the business, and that is a lot of money to fork out every year to me. But, um, hopefully, our business will, um, be great and succeed, but we're not going anywhere. We're excited.
And Tina did not know the, uh, ground rules for this kind of stuff earlier, first time around for us. And she missed a similar city council meeting, I think it'd be, back in, so we get that at the beginning of the month. I'm, I'm out of state for eight months of the year up in remote Alaska, so she's handling all this on her own. And, uh, she, I think there might have been a misconception that we're going to be a Coaches and Cowboys dance hall, which is the opposite of what we're going to do. So, part of our request today is to extend the special use permit for more than a year. And also clarify to council member, members that this is going to be a laid back place for people to come in, eat charcuterie, sip some wine, listen to good music. And there's actually no contingency, contingency to, it's not, it's not going to be a dance hall. Uh, I can assure you, it's, it, the exact opposite of that.
Plus that owner's still looking upstairs eventually, so.
Have to keep it down.
That's right. Uh, any questions, uh, for the applicant, for the Birch's? You know, the, the special use permit, it is kind of a weird vehicle in that whether it's one year or three years or whatever, as long as things are running smooth and you don't turn it into a big old honky-tonk where everybody's nuts. But if you do, it's revocable at any time. So I mean, i- i- if you do do that, in three months or four months, we can revoke your special use permit. So you'd lose it anyway. However, if y'all do exactly what you say you're going to do, that all of a sudden you've come back and, and your special use permit, why would it be denied to go further? So, whether it's one year or three years, it, it's all based on the behavior and the attitudes and all that. So, you know, I, I don't have an opinion at this point whether it's one year or three years, but I just want you to know that it's revocable if you turn it into crazy honky-tonk.
My question would be, is there, is there more cost to it after the year?
It's, it's a five hundred and fifty dollar permit every year at this one.
That would be a reason for you not to have just one year there, I'd say.
And also, we did write letters to the, um, to the churches, both churches.
I wrote on the sub of February, and I got a response back from the church to the south of us. They had no opposition. And Marvin Methodist got a letter on the same day, so we had no opposition to our files at the church.
Well, I also talked to Ms. Vasso, who owns the building, and she vouched for you. So, she's, she's good. So...
I'm good.
I'm not opposed to, to go a little bit longer than a year. It's up to, it's up to y'all.
I'm, I'm fine with it for three years.
Like you said, Mr. Mayor, we can do it for however long, but it's revocable.
Right.
At my notice. And it's, you know, five hundred and fifty dollars, so it says, and I'll take it down.
So is that motion?
But, if I may, I, I would add that of the other ones that we've all, we've approved in the past, they've all been indefinite. So this is the first, uh, one that the, that's, there's, there's been a recommendation for any timeframe. And so the city council can establish that, that timeframe, uh, whether it's one year, three years, or indefinite. But to be consistent with any of the other ones, they've all been indefinite.
That's even better. You may get more than you asked for.
Let's make an objection. You gonna make a motion?
Uh, I move to approve Z eight and have the, uh, special use permit to be more in line with others that we've granted in this area to indefinite.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Williams, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Okay, good luck with your project.
Good luck.
When will you be, when will you be open?
Well, soon. I, I have to get all this paperwork now.
Okay. I'm just, I'm...
But it's beautiful.
All right.
Get started.
I know, right?
But please come in.
Okay.
All right.
All right, Z nine.
This is a zone change from multi-family residential to R two two family. Uh, this is a down zoning, uh, to allow for the destruction of the duplex, uh, North Ward Avenue. This is also, this is a north end area, uh, similar to other requests. This, uh, as you can see here, the adjacent properties are generally zoned for multi-family, but they're either undeveloped or developed as a single, single family. Uh, to the west is, uh, zoned for industrial use, currently undeveloped. The, uh, request is consistent with the future land use guide, or actually would have amended to, uh, actually though it is consistent. And the, uh, again, they, they do plans to develop a duplex, and, uh, by the six year vote, the planning commission, uh, recommends approval of this request.
Any questions for Kyle? Do have a card on this, uh, Adam Reeves. No questions, no comments? I'm, I'm going to put you on a timer though, if you come back up.
My application obviously said, uh, no consent.
Okay. All right. Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion carries. Z ten.
This is a request, uh, from R P O, restricted professional office district, uh, to R one A, single-family residential on Forest Avenue. Uh, the property is currently developed with a single-family home, uh, and the, the intent is to keep... keep it that way. At some point in the past, the property was rezoned, but it's never redeveloped as an office. And so, the owner's currently wanting the zoning to match the use. And so, the surrounding properties are single-family homes. And this is consistent with the area. The planning commission by six-year vote recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z10.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kyle. Darren. Morning.
We want to come to you and just let you know about a, we want to submit an application for the transportation alternative set aside program. This, this grant will be for, is it, I just want to give you a background and then tell you what we're going to do for it. I know you've seen it a little bit, you know a little bit about it, but it is a funded by TechStop, federally funded program, but it's managed by TechStop. It is an 80/20 reimbursement grant. It's not a front-end grant, but it is a reimbursement. We pay for it and then do it. It is a, it is a two-year cycle, meaning, you know, biannual. And right now, we will know in the fall of October, if our, if y'all approve to submit the application, that we will, if it is approved or not. So, our project specifically, we are wanting to install sidewalk on both sides of the road on Divine Street, East Divine, going from Golden all the way over to TJC to Mahon. Along this route, we do have the Moore Magnet School. We also have Tyler Junior College at the west end. We have neighborhoods on both sides. We have the transit stops on there, and we also have a bike lane on the north side. What this will do is we'll create a, create an ADA accessible pathway on both sides of the road. And we'll just put sidewalk and curb ramps and all that, just so we have accessibility and keep people off the streets throughout this area in between. So, right now, we're requesting the city council consider adopting a resolution authorizing city staff to submit the application. In the installation of new sidewalk on East Divine Street with the TechStop for 2023 transportation alternative set aside program. And just as a brief explanation, what this resolution does is basically tells, it authorizes us, the city manager, to submit the application, but it also says, if they grant it, the application, approve it, and give us the grant, we will proceed with the project.
So, I assume these are putting in, these are being put in for safety reasons?
Yes.
Any questions for Darren?
Yeah. Why that location? Is it because of schools or is this a grant that there's other areas that we could apply for later or?
There are layers of, correct. This was just one that came up on the radar. We want to keep and just make it consistent throughout there with the, with the TJC and transit stops and the school there.
It checks off a lot of boxes when you go for the grant application with the college, the schools, the bus stop. So, it makes it, gives it, you know.
Higher school?
A higher rating or ranking.
Didn't we do this, didn't we do this before, like over by Austin or somewhere?
I think those are maybe community of all of them, Brock Grant, some of them have used for TJ Austin.
Yeah, that was.
That we had done for the sidewalk.
But it's for the kids.
It's for the, it's always for the kids.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Darren. Chris, come on down.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
Agenda number 01 is a request that city council consider adoption of ordinance updating and amending regulations to City Code Chapter 7 relating to substandard structures. Pretty much, this agenda item gives or clarifies authority for code enforcement under Chapter 7. While we already have implied powers under Chapter 18, code enforcement is not mentioned in Chapter 7. So, that's what this, if approved by council, would give us, or would clarify any amends in a couple of places in there. So, at this point, it's recommended that city council consider adopting an ordinance updating and amending regulations to City Code Chapter 7 relating to substandard buildings.
Any questions for Chris?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Chris.
O2, Prentice.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning.
I'm Ms. Prentice Butler. I'm the manager for the family self-sufficiency and housing trust voucher programs. I'm before you dated to request your approval of fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual plans for the family self-sufficiency program and the housing trust voucher program. The housing trust voucher program is a federally funded program designed to assist very low-income families, the elderly and disabled members of the community to afford essential and sanitary housing in the private market. The purpose of the housing agency plan is to describe the agency's approach to managing the program and providing services for the upcoming year. The first part of this process is to actually review both of the administrative plans and determine which areas that require updates and changes. The agency is required to have a public comment period of 45 days and to know if the public of that comment period, that began on March 24th, 2023, and it lasted through May 23rd, and we did not have any actual comments from the public. We're also required to have at least two public periods. We actually held three on this year, April 12th, the 13th, and the 18th, and we did not receive any comments from the public. We're also required to have a resident residential advisory board that's comprised of agency personnel, housing trust voucher participants, and family self-sufficiency participants. And we had an onsite meeting with the residential advisory board on May 3rd. And the last step of this process is to receive your approval of the agency's plan and to submit all the required forms to HUD before 45 days before the program, the new fiscal year begins. At this time, I would like to recommend, or ask for recognition that the city council of the ordinance approving the family self-sufficiency and housing trust voucher programs fiscal year 2023 and 2024 annual plans. Questions that I can answer?
Any questions for Prentice?
Move to approve, O2. Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Prentice.
Thanks, Prentice. M1, Darren.
This is the exciting one.
Sorry, you're ready for me? No, this, this is me.
Feel free to start.
Okay, as everybody knows, we've had several complaints and there's a lot of people coming in town wanting right-of-way permits, a lot of franchise utilities. For instance, AT&amp;T, Vexus, Opelmo, Frontier, Quintera, E-Tex have all been installing lines. The first three I mentioned, Vexus, AT&amp;T, and Opelmo are typically the top three installing, and a couple of those are liking the city, even in the same locations. So, we've had some issues with some of them. We've had some complaints from homeowners. We just had some inconsistencies with the way they're, they're installing things and repairing things. So, we wanted to, knowing that the Public Utilities Commission gives them the right to be there, we still want to have a better regulation for our, our regulations governing the way that they install in there and the way what they're doing in there, how they repair and locate and all that. So, to, back in fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2022, we did have a 130% increase in the number of permits. And so far this year, we have, we have already surpassed that and we're not even finished with the year yet. So, and on top of that, the permit applications are for, they're bigger, they cover more, more streets, more street length. So, on top, and right now, basically, what, we want to go ahead and revise this ordinance and give us, generally, give us guidance on permitting regulations, gives us guidance on construction of the lines, give us really guidance on everything that we've wanted to, what do we, how they, do they have to get rid of excess poles that are in the right-of-way or excess facilities that are abandoned and not used, or even things like that? So, I want to go over just a few things, just to go and just tell you kind of what this new revision includes, any clues? You've seen all the street cuts. We do establish what we call more Victorian streets. Those are streets that have had improvements in the last three years, and we say no cutting period. So, when we go in there and re-construct a street, we go in there and old-lit a street or anything like that, enhance the street in any way, that means you can't touch that for three years. So.
Just the street? Is that what you're trying to add?
The right-of-way is still okay, it's not the street. I mean, once you cut pavement, it's really not the same. So, we all know that, we've all seen that. So, we also have new streets with a pavement condition index greater than 85, you can't touch it for three years. So, and brick streets, you can't not open, cut those without written approval period.
Amen.
Yes. We're also required a right-of-way bond. They have to put up a $50,000 bond and have insurance requirements for any work in our right-of-way. And we're also required, they can't just go in there and then stop and go somewhere else and then come back later. They have to continuously, be continuously working until they're finished with that, with that area. So, there's, there are, and because they can work on one street and then another parallel street that some traffic may need to be diverted to, you cannot work on two parallel streets in a subdivision without written approval. They must replace any pavement within five calendar days, and they must replace any damaged facilities such as irrigation system or any type of, you know, water service line, sewer service line, or anything like that within 24 hours. That's what we've established in here. And facility abandonment, but we do see abandoned facilities that people just leave there. Now, they would have to, if it's, if it's not used for more than 60 days, they must remove it. So, we don't have these extra holes and stuff in the right-of-way that just tend to stay continue.
Darren, question before you, real quick, sorry to interrupt you, but you mentioned 24 hours of sewer water line repairs. Are they hiring the city or are they hiring their own sub to go out and make those repairs?
That varies typically, it varies whichever one. Now, a lot of times, we go out there and make the emergency repair if needed, if it's just immediate, depending on what size of the line of the service line, we've done it or we've also had, they've hired a plumber to do it, it doesn't benefit us.
And then we just turn around and if it's the city, we bill them at emergency rate hours?
We, we bill it. I have to get with Tina to be able to sign out what the rate is, but I was assuming it's probably not.
Darren, you, you mentioned irrigation. Do you mean like sprinkler system?
I do.
So, so in the right-of-way, if they hit sprinkler lines, they're obligated to repair them?
They're, they're obligated to, to restore the property, restore the right-of-way to its original condition, including print strains, including irrigation systems.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's new.
There's no distinction made. It says restore to its original conversion period.
What's that called, accountability?
It's a new thing.
Keep going.
So, it does allow me, if they have to cut a street or anything like that, it does allow me, as a city engineer or a nation department, to get materials, pay for that and get that and bill for them for that. If I don't think, if they had a failure or anything like that, or if I don't, we don't think in our inspection of it that they did it right, we have the ability to hire a testing company, go out there and test the, test the soil, test the subgrade, test the fixing, and make sure they're just right. It does refer to our standard detail, the ZIG guidelines. In here, it refers to them and incorporates them by reference, so they have to meet those requirements when they're fixing a street. So, there is a $25 permit fee established just to help recruit some of our right-of-way permit managers high. And the penalty, it actually, if they, if they do not abide and violate the ordinance, that there is up to $2,000 a day and it is a misdemeanor. So, we do have some teeth to be able to back up what we're saying, and there's traffic control required on this. Those are the highlights that I want to point out.
So, the pedestal on the top left, so what about above-ground appurtenances? What happens to those?
That is, that was a sticking point from a, from a, from a perspective that where there are existing above-ground facilities, it's, it's really hard to not let them put existing or new above-ground facilities. We have had times where there are, and I know at least one of them is working with us to put those under. So, but as far as, we've had issues both ways. I had, we had some complaints about above-ground facilities, then when they put it underground, well, that's a two-by-three box down there, that's too big. I'm like, well, it's a, it's a one-by-three up here and that has to be, instead of vertical, it has to be horizontal now. So, it's going to be a big box in the, that looks like the, like you'll see downtown. So, we do have high-profile areas as determined by the city, that high-profile projects where we can require underground facilities. But as far as a blanket, you must put everything underground, we do not have that.
What is the, what was that section? Head one and about the curb. Surface-mounted markers are needed. Each mounted medallion shall be used whenever possible. What is that, what is that referring to?
This also addresses for like just the, the small, as you would see for like a local area networks, the little antennas they would put and medallions to show those, to put those in. Just talking about that and for the end of this.
And so, what, what is the sticking point you're talking about us saying? We don't want any above-ground, are these junction box? What are these? What are they for?
Those are, those are, yeah, just junctions to where they serve like two to four houses. That's what I see.
It draws their attention, so here's, here's a junction here.
Correct. It's a handhole, whatever you call them.
Yeah, because that is, I mean, I'm sure somebody somewhere said, "Well, yeah, they didn't put my yard back from homeowners the way it was." I really haven't heard that complaint, but I've heard a lot of complaints about these little marker, the towers. Man, I sure wish we could do something other than that.
I have seen them put them underground, I've also seen them put them above ground.
The flush-mounted ones, I've not heard any complaints. Man, I'm not doubting that you can find someone that did complain.
We have.
But nobody wants the ones, and, and it's like the, the phone company junction boxes that are, or towers that are there, have been there so long, they don't see them anymore. But you add one new one, they see it and they notice it. So, I wish we, I really wish we could do something.
If you're saying we can't limit it where it has to be underground and you're giving them an option, can we at least limit it how often there's space? Because right now, it's at every single house. And you're saying it's, it could be four to five houses. Can we put a limitation on there for spacing and how many houses?
That gets into a means and methods. I mean, we can, I can check with legal to see what we want to do about that, but that gets into more of a means and methods that we could try and let them push back. Or, I know there are certain facilities like, that they cannot do underground, like it's, it's the size of a telephone signal controller box. So, we have just said they cannot be in the right-of-way and inhibit ADA routing, you know, access, or you cannot inhibit any type of visibility for traffic. But those are, those are a little different than these right here. So, we can, if we. So we can, if we'd like to put that in there, we could put that in there.
Yeah. I, I think this is good. I'm glad y'all did this. This is obviously better than what we've had, but I'm concerned it's not addressing the biggest problem that we're having.
Correct.
Is that the, the towers?
Correct.
I mean, and I agree with these guys. I mean, if, if this room was full.
It wouldn't be big.
Of Hollytree people that have been affected by the towers have been so.
It's more than that.
But it's not just, it's not just Hollytree, it's also the woods and.
It's what you're talking about going to modify the pedestals of Hollytree.
And that's, Vexis worked with us and they did put it underground.
I might interject. Heather, Heather Nick, I, for, for this ordinance, if the council desires that these, this type of infrastructure be placed underground, that is something that can be incorporated into the ordinance. If there were a situation with the utility where, you know, they just simply could not place something underground, you know, they can bring that to us, we can review it and maybe it could be some kind of variance request. But for most instances, these types of infrastructure can be placed underground. It's simply kind of an economics thing with utilities as far as what's easier and what you see above ground is perhaps what's usually easier for them. However, in other communities, these things are placed underground if it is listed out in the ordinance.
Yeah, I'd rather see it as below ground with the exception of, well, that just doesn't work in this, okay, well, that's fine there, but the rule is it's underground.
I'd agree with that. Based on the complaints and the number of complaints that we have seen, I think that's the correct way to go.
The interesting thing is, is you've got everybody complaining about services provided. Now we have new providers coming in to give them an option, but they don't like the way it looks. So, I mean, it's getting options, but you don't like, you know, like the way it looks. No, I would not like the green box in front of my yard. I've got one that's been next to a telephone pole for as long as I've lived there. I don't even know it's there anymore. But, you know, if you had three of them on your corner, you know, especially at a location like that, I would wonder if that's prone to get hit.
Yeah, oh, for sure. I just want it to have some teeth, because what we have now with what's happened, and I'll go back to Hollytree, there, we have had no teeth whatsoever. Whenever they, it's free range and it's just nice to have something where we have some input.
We can add, just like you said, we can add a, a section in here that just says all facilities must be underground unless approved and ratified by the city council.
I like that. So do we need to disable this until you modify it or just?
I think we make a motion. Yeah, I'd have that too.
Make that motion.
Well, I would also like to, last point, without beating a dead horse, you know, you've mentioned Vexis several times. It wasn't Vexis in Hollytree, it was Optimum, and Optimum is the one that started all these problems. And then I think they also broke two, two water mains, didn't they, when they did this?
That doesn't narrow down breaking water mains.
Do what?
That doesn't narrow down breaking water mains.
Oh, there's been a lot of them. No, I know, but I'm just saying this, it was, it was a different issue of not just Vexis.
I was trying not to cut anybody out, but.
It's a subject.
The protections that the, this current ordinance provides, it might be a recommendation that you all accept the current ordinance and, and give us an opportunity to go back and bring you back revisions with the additional requirements. Does that, does that help?
But that is up to the council, if y'all want to just tell us to put that in there, requirement in there, or if you'd rather us.
Yeah, the, the concern of when we are modifying this one, we want to make sure that the council understands what the modifications are to the extent that they are. I understand saying just putting in a provision, I want to make sure that it is in line with everything else that the, the ordinance has.
Can we get that back the next, for the next council meeting?
But we would like this one to go in now.
Right, yes. So can you get that revision back for the next council meeting? I wouldn't want it to just drift on, you know, and we forget.
I think we could probably come with a modification by July 12th meeting. You know, the, by y'all putting it in, if you do approve it today, that does give, you know, opportunities for staff to go ahead and, these do, the rest of the other pieces up there here, here on this. And then for the July 12th, we have a language for you in relation to underground boxes.
Darren, once we approve this today, then y'all will move forward and contact all the providers and let them know this is the new way we're playing now and.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd like to go back to what James touched on earlier. I think that there should be some specific billing if we're doing the work, that utility repair work, because, and James used the term emergency, I think that would be something we wanted that modification too, because, and I'm not talking about after hours only, but anytime we go out, because our crews have their normal work schedules and if there's something that happens and they have to pull away, that's extra cost to the city. So I think we should have some special billing to those companies also for if we're doing the repairs.
Okay. We could add that in on the, on the review also. That would be a bill that say overtime pay or emergency. You need to work with the city, the city crew to do that.
Because if they call it good plumber, he'll say, I can't be there until five, and that's a overtime rate.
And just for clarification, for repairs by utilities for, if there is, if it is something that the city does the repair on, it will be for cost reimbursement, so the cost of the project or the work that we've done. If they have to then bring in a licensed plumber, only a license plus a restoration of the customer service will be within four hours of damage and the cost of the repairs should be borne by the right of way user and permit holder. Only a licensed plumber may perform repairs to customer sewer, water, or indoor gas line services if they've damaged their own personal services to the, to the house or business. So, but you do already have it to where you have cost reimbursement that is cited.
Yeah, the difference is if it's an emergency overtime pay or it's after hours pay or if it's just a string time. That's what you're saying.
Yes, and I think it should be emergency because our crews are doing something anyway. They'd have to pull away, there's costs associated with that type of activity.
All right, so what's the motion going to be?
Well, I guess, I guess approve it as written right now with the caveat of coming back at next council to add in those two additional requirements that we discussed.
July 12th meeting.
Yeah. And Heather, thank you for that input, I appreciate that.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Haney, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, down to the consent agenda. Everything look good as is or we need to pull anything?
Move to approve as is.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City manager report.
All right. So, Mayor and Council, a few items to note, first of which is we have the newest podcast out on our roses and weeds, featuring our very own Councilman Lloyd Nichols. So you can learn more about him and his, the things that he likes and doesn't like and on that, as far as on that podcast. You can also probably ask him right here, but that's a different story. One of the things that we always are mindful of is we, you know, during the summer, we have our swimming pool open, Fun Forest Pool is there and we have lots of enjoyment. One of the things we're always mindful of is just safety over there. And one of the things that I want to kind of call out is on June 17th, we had an incident with a child who became unresponsive at Fun Forest Pool, and our train line guards thankfully, and our pool staff quickly jumped into action and helped save the boy's life. The child was taken to hospital ambulance, once they arrived on the CNS system further, he was released the following day. Our staff is trained to handle situations like this and did it very well. We're thankful for their dedication to their job. Water safety is a serious topic, it's imperative that we make sure that we're all doing our due diligence. So we're very proud of our lifeguard staff of the Fun Forest Pool and the work that they did on that. We just celebrated National Pollinator Week, and so Keep Tyler Beautiful had quite a bit of activities going along with it. I know when it became a bee city a number of years ago, many of us, including myself, kind of rolled their eyes. But one of the things that was very, that we've seen from this, and I've been proven wrong once again, is just how just kind of the community can get behind this. And so Keep Tyler Beautiful hosted a pollinator photo contest on Facebook, they got with East Texas Brewing Company and Dr. Backen, Backenstein Stein to host a pollinator themed trivia night. We also worked with Brookshire's Grocery Company, where they displayed signs on items containing pollinator dependent ingredients. And so then to finish off this week's celebration, we hosted our third annual bee day in the garden at the Rose Garden on Saturday. So the community really came out for that and enjoyed it. And again, things for the community to come out and enjoy, next Tuesday is Independence Day. And so to celebrate our freedom on that July 4th, we have out at Lindsay Park, we have every year, it open from, starting at 3 a.m., or 3 p.m. You can call 3 a.m. and go in and get your spot, but it's not that much competition, so you'll be okay. But 3 p.m. to then the fireworks going on at dusk. And so it's always a huge event. We really appreciate the fact that the community comes out to celebrate Independence Day with us. And so again, that'll be there for, for you and the council and for our citizens and neighbors to be able to come and enjoy.
Is that it?
Oh, we also have an airshow coming up on June 3rd out at the airport.
30th, 30th.
June 30th, thank you. I knew there was a three in there. And so on, this Friday, it, feel free to wear shorts and short sleeve shirts to the airshow.
Benefits can't be.
It does benefit, can't be. It's a great fundraiser for them.
All right, any other comments for the city manager before we adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I take this opportunity? I'm sorry, I met a young man at city council, excuse me, at the Civil Air Patrol last evening, just moved to Tyler, Texas, and he's in our audience today, want to say hello to him. He actually just graduated from high school and he's going to be majoring in political science, so he came to join us today to see how government is run.
Well, I actually talked to him before we started.
Very good.
And told him that you're going to be able to see good government at work, so how was it?
Pretty good.
His father actually is a cardiologist and neonatologist, and so he's going to be practicing here in Tyler as well. So we welcomed him from Houston, Texas. Thanks for coming.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.